I hereby call the Palm Springs Regular City Council Meeting of December 12th, 2024 to order. Unfortunately, I don't think our pledge was able to make it, but I do want to thank Dr. Terry Kedover and the Do the Right Thing Program for, and Chief Mills, for honoring kids in our valley who just do the right thing with this program. And we've had them do the pledge all year, and the 20 or so students I've met have been really set examples for the youth of our community. So, thank you to Terry and Chief Mills, and please join me in our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Normally, we would clap.
I know, we can clap for them. City Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call?
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Okay. City Manager, I believe you had an announcement?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I appreciate the indulgence. Very briefly, I wanted to introduce to the community our new Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Nick Gonzalez. Nick came to us from the city of Ontario where he ran the Parks and Rec Department there, and he went, we went through a long process to find Nick as our new director, and I wanted him, I know he's met many of you on council, but I wanted to formally introduce him to the community, and maybe Nick could come forward and just say a very quick word or two.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and the Palm Springs community. As Scott mentioned, my name is Nick Gonzalez, and I am new Director of Parks and Recreation. Thank you so much. It's been only four days, and I can already feel such a warm welcome from you all here, our staff members, and then, of course, our amazing community members. I live here kind of part-time, and then also live and commute in Rancho Cucamonga, and so I'm very familiar with the Palm Springs community. I've been attending several of our special events in our community programs that the Parks and Recreation Department does, and I'm just so thrilled and so excited to be here and lead the department moving forward. I know you'll see me very much, a lot more coming soon, as we implement and start adopting our new Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and I'm so excited to be a part of that process and make some changes for our Parks and Recreation system throughout the community. So again, thank you so much for welcoming me, and I'm so excited to be here. Thank you all.
Thank you, Nick. We're all very excited that you're here. So, we're looking forward to it. I wanted to go over some proclamations that were done this month, so we are sure to recognize these deserving residents. Dr. Les Zendel was honored on November 26th, 2024, for his eight years of service and his contribution to equitably connecting Eastern Coachella Valley residents to health and wellness services. Dr. Zendel volunteered as a physician, offering free clinical services, serving vulnerable residents of the Coachella Valley. He provided valuable insight and leadership through board committee service, as well as being a proponent of reaching a new hospital lease purchase agreement for Desert Regional Medical Center. We also, Dr. Carmina Zavala was honored on November 26, 24, as well, for her four years of service on the Board of the Desert Healthcare District and Foundation Board. She helped raise board awareness and evaluate discussions about behavior health challenges in the Coachella Valley. In her first year of service, Dr. Zavala was honored as a trustee of the year by the Association of California Healthcare Districts at his 2021 annual meeting. Dr. Zavala contributed to implementing the Desert Healthcare District and Foundation's mission through her service. Charles Suppleday was proclaimed on December 6th, 2024, and was honored with the 472nd Star on the Palm Springs Walk of the Stars, honoring him for his unwavering commitment to accessible, innovative, and compassionate care, and leading him to pioneer new healthcare models for Southern California, and grow the Palm Springs Medical Center into a beacon of excellence. Dr. Supple's dedication to Palm Springs extended well beyond medicine, with his leadership in social services as President of the United Way of the Desert and his modernization efforts as Chairman of the Palm Springs International Airport Commission. We also had the 75th anniversary of the Desert Arts Center, took place on December 6th. The Desert Arts Center was established in 1950, and is the oldest nonprofit volunteer arts organizations in the Coachella Valley. Desert Arts Center has contributed to art education by providing high school students scholarships, funding grants to school art departments, and sponsoring free art classes, as well as serving as a venue for thousands of artists to learn, create, display, and sell their artwork over the past 75 years. And lastly, we honored our very own Michelle Seron Collier on December 9th, for her 35 years of service with the city of Palm Springs. Michelle became an integral and, yes. Michelle became an integral and well-respected member of the Desert Recreation Division, supervising and creating activities and programs. She's been involved in the planning and implementation of the city's three signature parades since their inception, the Greater Palm Springs Pride, the Festival of Lights, and the Veterans Day Parade. Michelle has created a lasting legacy of special events in Palm Springs, creating fun and uplifting experiences for residents and tourists alike. Thank you, Michelle. Our next item is acceptance of the agenda. The City Council will discuss the order of the agenda, may amend the order, add urgency items, note abstentions, or no votes on consent calendar items, or request consent calendar items be removed for a separate discussion. I would like to entertain a motion for acceptance of the agenda. Are there any items the staff or council member would like removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion and/or vote? Have a motion? Okay, motion passes 5-0. There was no closed session. The next item is public testimony. This time, it's been set aside for members of the public to address the City Council on non-public hearing agenda items only. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. You're asked to please begin your time by telling us what agenda item or items you are speaking about. Please note that the testimony for public hearings will be taken at the time of the public hearing, and general public comment for subjects not on the agenda will be taken later in the evening. If there's written comment that you wish to distribute to the City Council members, please hand it to the City Clerk. The first speaker is Lauren Wolfher. Be followed by Kathy Wurmiak.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here today to express my gratitude to Council members Kristi Holstidge and Lisa Middleton for their dedicated service to our city. Palm Springs is a better place to live, thanks to your leadership. I have to wait here for a second. No, it's okay. Kristi, it has been such an honor to work alongside of you. I'm gonna get through this. When I first met you, I was, when you were running for the first time in 2017, I was working as a server downtown, and it was so meaningful to have someone who spoke for us, who was one of us on council, and you really showed me what it, what it means to actually have a voice in this city. You've opened so many doors, not just for individuals, but for entire communities. This year, we've had so many amazing milestones, the Navigation Center, COD West Valley Campus, affordable housing projects, the Section 14 settlement. This is thanks to your incredible leadership. There are so many accomplishments, more than I could list, and I'll spare everyone that, but you're leaving an incredible legacy of equity and inclusion in this city that will inspire change for years to come. Both you and Councilmember Middleton are leaving incredibly large shoes to fill. So, we are so lucky to have Naomi Soto and David Reddy joining this council. I want to say congratulations to both of you, and also congratulations to Mayor Pro Tem DeHart. Thank you again, Councilmember Middleton and Councilmember Holstidge. I wish you both the very best in whatever comes next.
Thank you. After Kathy will be Jeff Cores.
Mayor Bernstein, members of the council, I'm here tonight just to say thank you to my good friend Lisa Middleton. I've been talking with people around town, asking for descriptions of Lisa as a council member. I hear principled, thoughtful, pragmatic, compassionate, honest, committed to her beliefs, incredibly reasonable, guided by research and principles measured, respectful of everyone's opinion, and absolutely able to understand budgets. I don't know exactly what Lisa considers her major accomplishments, but I want to talk about a few of them that I know of. Before she was on council, Lisa was the president of One Palm Springs, and as One Palm Springs, she, she is really responsible, I believe, for pressing to have Measure J funds fix our streets and fix our potholes. I think we drive on good streets today because of the pressure that she put on that issue for years and years. I worked with her in Planning Commission. It was also a great honor, having, having her as a colleague as we finished the downtown and got that back to a good commercial area. I worked with Lisa on the move to turn, to change the council into districts, where she was one of the two co-chairs on the council, moving for equity, and I believe what's happened, and I think she's responsible for the wonderful diversity we see on this council and on the, on the council that will succeed you. A few of the things that I want to mention, they're, they're small, but her, her work to, to get, am I done?
We'll let you go on.
Okay.
We don't have a lot tonight, so.
Lisa worked hard to get the speed limits changed on Caltrans roads to make everyone safer, and she's, I think that's an important accomplishment in public safety for the city. She also used her financial acumen to help us increase our reserves and stay on budget, especially during the down years with COVID. And she was also appointed by Governor Newsom to serve on the CalPERS Reform Board. This is especially important, not just for my pension, which is really important to me, but to people all over the state, but it was also really important to the city, because she used that connection with the governor's office to help us in myriad ways, including getting the money to, to replace the Indian Canyon Bridge. I just want to say, and I love all of you, but I did want to focus today on Lisa, just say what a wonderful city council member you've been, and how hard it will be to replace you. David, you have big shoes to fill.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jeff Cores, and then John Pavla.
Good evening, Mayor Bernstein, soon-to-be Mayor Ron DeHart, and congratulations, and Councilmembers Holstidge, Middleton, and Garner, and to our great, hard-working staff here in the city. First, just congratulations. What an amazing year of accomplishments. You all should be very proud, and we're all very thankful for all you've done this year. It's amazing. So I also want to focus on our two outgoing council members, my former colleagues and friends. You know, Kristi, you have been so inspiring. Your passion for people who need our support has been incredible. Working families, homeless, and people who are at risk of being homeless, our youth, and it's so great to hear kids in this chamber and have parents in this chamber, and it made a difference. You know, your work to get the Navigation Center actually come to fruition, hero pay for our frontline grocery workers, your effort to help the city address the impacts of climate change, so there's a real future here for people to live around. Really amazing, amazing work, and your legal skills and political strategy have benefited our city in so And your legal skills and political strategy have benefited our city in so many ways and brought funding to the city. Lisa, you represent what is best about public servants. You're smart, you're dedicated, you're hardworking, you're sometimes frustratingly reasonable, and you're willing to listen, and you have empathy for people. You know, Kathy mentioned some of the things I was going to mention, your focus on neighborhoods and road safety, and making sure we had reserves, which helped us get through the pandemic so much better than so many other cities. But I also want to touch on your taking on challenging issues, and vacation rentals, and district elections, where there are very divided community, and did the hard work to make it work for us. So thank you for all you do. And just on district elections, as my last thing, that started five years ago in our city. For 80 years in this city, maybe two or three people of color on this council, not that many women, it was mostly white men, myself included. That, that's our history. And in those five years, we are now going to have our first council with a majority, council members of color, and we'll have a majority of women as well. That's amazing, in just five years, and it's about time. So, so appreciate it. We also had concerns that we wouldn't get good people to run for council. I think the folks we have sitting up here and the two who are joining us are really evidence that that did not happen. So, congratulations to you, Mayor Protam, on becoming mayor, and to our two new council members, David Reddy and Naomi Soto, who are going to bring their lived and work and life experience to this council, and are going to add so much benefit. We're really fortunate to have them. So, thank you, and thank you for giving me the time to speak.
Our next speaker is John Pavlak, followed by Jenny Foeck.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff, city attorney. Just, my name is John Pavlak, I'm with Watermark Ventures, and I just wanted to thank everybody for helping pull, pull the, pull the donation together there. And everybody really worked diligently, and I really appreciate that, myself and my partner, Dennis Troche. So I wanted to thank everybody again. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jenny Foeck.
Yeah, I didn't do a big speech, so I'm probably going to take just the two minutes. Thank you, Lisa, for all you've done for this city. It's been amazing. And as I said to you earlier, one door closes and another door opens, and I see you doing great things still for our state. Kristi, thank you. Ron, I am so excited that you're going to be the new mayor. We've worked together on a lot of projects, and, and we've, we've had fun, and I'm, your leadership is incredible. Jeffrey, you've taken us in a fabulous directions. You still have a lot of things that you've started that are fabulous, the AI stuff, the, all of the, the things that are, that are in, in the works. So thank you for your tireless efforts and all the things that you've done. I want to talk a little bit now about the new council member that's coming on board, which is David Reddy. I had the pleasure, and it was a pleasure, of serving 14 years on this council with David Reddy as the city manager. We have, my council is here, actually, with Steve, and Chris are here. And we rebuilt downtown under David's leadership. And so you are getting a very, very wonderful and knowledgeable person on this council. He knows where all the bodies are buried, and he knows all the rumors and all the things that, that should have happened, that didn't happen, and the things that did happen that shouldn't have happened. And so I wish you all best of luck. And, and David, welcome, welcome, and I'm so pleased that you're coming on the council.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Vignolo, followed by Abraham Ischaff. David? Yeah. Followed by Abraham.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Bernstein, Mayor Protam DeHart, councilmembers Garner, Holstidge, and Middleton, Mayor Protam-elect Soto, and councilmember-elect Reddy. Thank you for granting, I hope, the Human Rights Commission the ability to resume consideration of new business effective immediately. It's item 1F on this evening's consent calendar. This action will allow the HRC to reengage with the community and align with your desire and that of Police Chief Mills to move us forward in 2025 through what will certainly be a particularly challenging year. The HRC looks forward to working with city staff and the city attorney to have a draft of a revised Chapter 2.45 of the Palm Springs Municipal Code for the new council's consideration early in 2025. I was also very pleased to hear Mayor Bernstein speak at last week's community conversation in response to community concerns about potential hate crimes and inclusivity following the 2024 election, and reaffirm the need to strengthen the HRC, as well as other boards, committees, and commissions. I hope next year's council, led by Mayor DeHart, will further this commitment by filling the two current vacancies on the HRC quickly when they resume business next month, and consider providing it with funding so it can carry out its work. Let us begin to work together to move this city forward and be a voice for those in our city who are scared and afraid to speak up. More than ever, the city of Palm Springs needs a robust Human Rights Commission. Thank you, Councilmember Middleton, for your work and leadership. You were the first council member that I encountered when I moved here six years ago, and I appreciate working with you, particularly on the Guaranteed Income Pilot Program. Congratulations, Councilmember Holstidge. I'm excited to be working with David Reddy, who will be our new council member, and I look forward to working with the rest of the team in the next year. So, best of luck to all of you, and happy holidays.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Abraham Ischaff.
To welcome the new council, I have written a poem titled "Carrots." Today marks one year of making speeches to council, a year of carrots, not nourished, not harvested, just dangled. After months of speeches, Mayor Protam dangled the first carrot, an almost agenda item, a resolution to block international resolutions. Hold tight, they said, it'll be brought back, but it wasn't. Just a carrot, dangled, then left to rot. Councilmember Holstidge follows me. Draft the resolution, she says. Emails back cryptic. Whip the votes. I whip the votes, keep my ear to the ground, listening for the agenda item to be added. Nothing, just another carrot dangling on a fraying string. Mayor Protam again. I need to see community support. So the community shows up, fills the council chambers, voices echoing. Surely, this is enough, but no, the string gets longer, just another carrot, dangled. And now a new council sits before me. Will you reach for the scissors, cut the string, and deliver, or will it be another year of empty promises, another year of carrots?
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
No further commenters.
No further? Okay. The next item is the consent calendar. I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar. Okay, passes 5-0. And now we have our outgoing council member comments. If I may, just first, you know, we actually have now, what will be later tonight, five mayors up here. So, to Lisa, like everybody else, I have learned from you. I knew this day was coming, that, when, when I got onto council, but I'm still regretting that you're leaving. But you've been so wise, and so, such a calming influence, and such a mentor to me, and I appreciate you more than you know. Kristi, we started a lot of things together. You better help me, because I can, I'm going to keep them all going. But you, your passion, your drive, your caring for the city, and for those less fortunate, is truly inspirational. So thank you. Thank you for, as was said, leaving big shoes to fill, both of you. So thank you. Kristi, would you like to speak?
Hello. Let me put this down. Can I put you down? Good to see you, all of you. Thank you for being here. Thank you to our council members who have served before us, who are here tonight in the chamber. Such an honor to have you, and just to celebrate the joy of this community. We love Palm Springs, we know it's like no place else, we know it's truly unique, and we know we have an amazing village, and the people of Palm Springs make it so incredible. And we have people who are born and raised here who do incredible things, and then people who move here from all over the world to invest in this community. And it's just joyful and heartening to see us come together. Lisa and I have served for two terms, seven years together, and with many of the council members in the audience tonight. We've survived a global pandemic. We have survived three city managers, two city attorneys. And, you know, there's been a lot of change that's happened in the city of Palm Springs over seven years. If you imagine back seven years ago, we were reeling from still trying to renovate and, and redo downtown, thank you to the council who came before, who made those investments, and the city manager, David Reddy, who made such smart moves to build our economy. But in 2017, it was still slow, and really proud of the work we've built to continue on the Palm Springs Renaissance. I'm sure Lisa has many talking points about how we've grown the budget, and how we've invested in our reserves, how we've invested in public safety, we've really invested in people, we've hired staff to provide services that didn't exist before. We got us, we got a city council in a city at the time. Yeah? Okay, go ahead. Okay, go ahead. Sorry, I promised him he could sit up here with me today, and remember when I got sworn in as mayor, years ago, I held him as a seven-week-old baby. And so, you know, we got a city that didn't have services for homelessness, now we have a $40 million Navigation Center. Not only that, but we have onsite staff who are providing tenant assistance every single day. We've renovated, we've changed and significantly innovated what the services that the city are providing. We've brought on amazing city staff in our time, an incredible city manager, an incredible city attorney, incredible new fire and police chief, and you can just see the future of Palm Springs is so bright because of the people who lead it. And city council comes and goes, but the city staff does that hard work every single day. And I just want to thank the city staff for all your hard work, and I know you work tirelessly to build a beautiful Palm Springs for all of us, so thank you for that. And thank you for putting up with us and all that we do on city council as well. But I'm proud of the investments we've made in affordable housing, putting together a revenue stream for affordable housing so we can continue to build more and more units. We've done 200 units of affordable housing. When we first got on city council, this city council hadn't done affordable housing in 10 years. I'm really proud of the voices that we've brought in. Thank you to councilmember Jeff Kors, who led the effort also to move to districts, and thank you for flagging how changed the city is, and how amazing it is and beautiful it is to see so many voices that we didn't hear before. And so finally, just taking this moment to say thank you, so thank you to my colleagues. It's truly been an honor to serve with you. Thank you to Mayor Jeffrey Bernstein, who I think we should all give him another round of applause for his tireless work. It's a hard job to serve as mayor. It's incredibly time-consuming, you run a business on top of it, you're doing a lot on top of it, and I think you have served this city so, so well, and your love for this city really shines through. So thank you for that. To our colleagues who are continuing, thank you for your leadership. Thank you for engaging in this job, which is the best job in the world, and also the hardest job in the world sometimes. And thank you to my husband and my family. You've supported me, you've allowed me to do city council full-time for many years. I've left two full-time jobs to do this job because it's so demanding. You've been incredible, running my campaigns, supporting me, both behind the scenes and, you know, in front, taking on a lot of childcare when we have city council meetings, and just being an overall support. And thank you to my son, Aiden, who's given up me every Thursday, you know, every other Thursday night, but understands the value of investing in our residents, investing in our community. So thank you for the seven years of joy, and hope, and struggle, and drama, and all the things we've been through together. It's truly been the best honor of my life, and I'm so grateful. Thank you. I forgot one thank you, it's the most important one, which is my parents. And so my parents have also just cheered me on, they've watched the meetings, they consider it their, the best thing on TV every other Thursday night, they know all the characters. So thank you for my parents for, you know, caring about this city and for investing in me. Thank you.
Councilmember Middleton.
I'd like to begin by asking everyone to give another round of applause to my friend and colleague, Kristi Holstidge. I don't usually write everything out, but this time I did. So I want to begin by congratulating David Reddy and Naomi Soto, and by thanking Joe Jackson, Ernest Assina, and David Rios for stepping up to run. It is never easy to run for office, and what you have done will make a difference. It's been the honor of my lifetime to serve this wonderful city as member of your city council. Over the past few weeks, as I prepared for this evening, it has felt a little bit like waiting for the hangman to show up and dispatch me. So, I'm going to miss this place, I'm going to miss being here, but it is time to step aside. And I could not be more pleased than to know that it is David Reddy that is going to follow me here. Our city and my district is in good hands. My first thank you belongs to the organized neighborhoods of Palm Springs. I am here today because of One PS and the relationships I made working for our neighborhoods and with people who believe in neighborhoods. In the past decade, we have made some progress to more fully integrating the deaf and hard-of-hearing community fully into our city. We have an extremely long way to go, but it matters so much to me that many of you in the community have come up and made it clear your appreciation for the small steps that we have taken so far. We are a special city because of the millions of people who annually visit our city, and our business and tourism community that serves all of us. I and all of us are in debt to the incredible business community of Palm Springs. Thank you. To our city managers that I worked with, David Reddy, Justin Clifton, Teresa Galavan, and Scott Stiles, thank you so much. To Chief Mills and Chief Alvarado, you are simply the best. To all of the incredible staff every day of Palm Springs, you have made me proud of your work and your commitment to the city. You are how things get done. And I spent most of my adult life as a civil servant. I am proud to be a civil servant, along with you. There are a few people that I have to individually say thank you to, beginning with Jeff and Jer- beginning with Jeff and Jeremy and Chris, Veronica, Brenda, Yubi, Elisa, Cindy, Amy, Kitty, and my very dear friend Denise Golsby. To Chairman Miladovich, the tribal council of the Agua Caliente Band of Quee Indians and the Agua Caliente People, thank you. Your sovereignty is foundational. Our ability to work together with mutual respect is never a given. But I will always treasure our respect that we have earned with one another. To my colleagues on council, Rob Moon, J.R. Roberts, Jeff Kors, Dennis Woods, Kristi Holstidge, Grace Garner, Jeffrey Bernstein, and Ron DeHart, a huge thank you. We have agreed, we've disagreed, we've listened, and on a few occasions, we've argued. But most importantly, we've respected one another, and we've respected our city. We've taken on tough issues that many cities try to avoid. We are a better city because we are willing to take on and do the tough stuff. In my seven years on city council, we've nearly doubled retail sales in this city, seen an almost 75% increase in hotel and vacation rental income, increased airport passengers from 2 million to over 3.3 million per year. We've gone from $110 million revenues to over $190 million. We've increased our annual police budget from $23 to $43 million, our fire budget from $16 to $27 million. And thank goodness, we have spent over $53 million repairing our streets. And yes, that deserves a round of applause. We've taken our total reserves from $32 million to over $125 million. Yes. And we've taken vacation rental complaints from $1,300 a year to just under $300, while increasing the number of vacation rentals. When I was running for office, I was asked the best question ever. Is Palm Springs a small city of neighborhoods or a world-class destination? My answer then was, we are both if we get the balance right. Everybody has a little bit different view of what the proper balance is. But that is the unique, challenging question before Palm Springs, and it always will be. But it is the millions of people who come and visit our city that make a difference in the city that we have. As I've joked from time to time, without all those million visitors, we'd all be standing in line at Denny's waiting to get dinner. People who could live and visit anywhere come to live and visit in Palm Springs. We are a city of choice. The challenge before us is to always make this a city that people want to come to. And when they get here, they're glad they came. Palm Springs is and must always remain a place of welcome. It is the foundation of who we are. It has never been more important, now that so many communities in so many states across our country have made it clear that they are not welcoming, that we continue to hold to Palm Springs' value and be a place of welcome for everyone. I want to thank this community for welcoming Cheryl and I. This remains the best place I have ever lived. And because of your welcome, because of Palm Springs' value, I have been judged in this city by what I could do and how hard I was willing to work. Because of you, I am California's first transgender person elected to a political office. America, America's third transgender mayor, the first and only out-member of the LGBT community to serve on the CalPERS Board and became a vice president of the 486 cities that make up the League of California Cities. At a time when my community is under an enormous political attack across the country, ranging from the president-elect to school boards across this country, I cannot thank Palm Springs enough. And of course, because of Palm Springs, I have been able to enact my transgender agenda for America. Public safety, emergency management, repairing streets, and fiscal responsibility. Lastly, and most importantly, I thank my wife, my family. Their love is the foundation of everything I do. Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments? Kristi, Grace? Later, okay. Okay. You want to say something, Grace? Okay.
Thank you both. I'm so honored to have served with council members Middleton and Holstidge. I think I'm going to continue to call each of you council member, or perhaps we'll just start calling you mayor. I still see Rob Moon and call him Mayor Moon, so I think I should just start calling you Mayor Holstidge and Mayor Middleton from now on as well. Kristi, I will miss your incredible policy analysis and your ability to really get down into the nuts and bolts of what we're doing and make sure that our policies are clear and effective, that you always make sure to explain things clearly to the community. Up here, we're given dozens of documents to review, and we know this material inside and out, but so many of you in the audience don't. And council member Holstidge was the first one who I saw coming up, sitting on this dais and explaining things in an easy-to-understand manner so that anyone watching the meeting could feel part of it. And that is something that I'm going to miss, and I hope to do, now that you won't be able to. And I hope that I make you proud in that. We will miss you very much. And Lisa, I have even more work to do to try to make sure that your issues are properly handled. Your ability to handle budgets and issues of speed and transportation is just really incredible. I hope that this council will give me the honor of taking over your roles in the transportation arena. And I know I have a ton to learn. But I am so glad that you laid the groundwork, and your colleagues at these organizations adore you for good reason. And so, I hope that I can make you proud as I continue your service on those commissions. You are so very reasonable, as has been said so many times. But you also are incredibly passionate, and you tackle hard issues. And Lisa and I probably disagree more than anyone else on this dais. But we are also, I would say, I think, the most alike because we both care deeply about what we're doing up here. And when we present opposing ideas, it's because that's truly what we each think is the best path forward. And what Lisa says is her truth, and what I say is my truth. And I think that's why we get along so well, because of that deep respect. Thank you both so much for everything that you've accomplished. I'm so proud to have served with you, and I wish you so much success in your future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? So, we're going to take a five-minute recess to rearrange the seating, and then we'll follow up with the swearing of the new council members. But please join me once again in thanking Kristi and Lisa for their incredible work in our city. Okay. We'll take a five-minute recess.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess. Yes, sir. Welcome back, everyone. We will now administer the oath of office to our newly elected officials. First, we adjourned by Breton Stidle, who will administer the oath of office to council member-elect Naomi Soto, representing District 4. Please join us on the platform so that we can swear you in. Evelyn, you may have to hold the mic since they have the kids.
Thank you.
Please repeat after me. I, Naomi Soto...
I, Naomi Soto.
That while serving...
That while serving...
As a member of the Palm Springs City Council...
As a member of the Palm Springs City Council.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance...
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purposeful evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully...
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next. Naomi, Naomi. Thank you, thank you. Next, we'll be joined by former councilmember Lisa Middleton, who will administer the oath of office to councilmember-elect David H. Reddy, representing District 5. Please join us on the platform.
Please repeat after me. I, David H. Reddy...
I, David H. Reddy.
That while serving as a member of the Palm Springs City Council...
That while serving as a member of the Palm Springs City Council...
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend...
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend...
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation...
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you.
Congratulations to our newly elected councilmembers. Councilmember Soto, would you like to share a few words?
Good evening. It is an honor and a privilege to be here before you all as your new colleague and as your new councilmember for the city of Palm Springs. It's all quite pretty incredible. I am the daughter of immigrants, and I grew up in the East Coast. I grew up in the East Coast, and in 2008, when I graduated from college, if I had to point out Palm Springs on a map, I don't know if I would have gotten it right. But I took a job in 2011 to teach health at Coachella Valley High School. I packed up my car, I drove across the country, and I fell in love with the Coachella Valley. The mountains, the landscape, the people, there's nowhere like it. Palm Springs, there's no place like it. I thought I'd be here two years. But 13 years later, I feel so lucky to have built my career, my life, and my home here. And I'm so grateful and honored to have the trust of the people of Palm Springs to now serve in District 4. I just want to say a few thank yous and comments as I start this four-year journey here on council. First, to Kristi Holstich, councilmember Holstich. It is not an exaggeration to say that you brought a new era of leadership to this city. On so many issues, you were a champion, you were an advocate for a stronger economy, for issues of homelessness, students, working residents, entrepreneurs, parents, and families. Our city is better for the perspective and fight that you brought to this city. To councilmember Middleton, thank you so much for your leadership. You've demonstrated that with respectful dialogue, persistence, and focus, we can get so much good work done. To my new colleagues, I look forward to working with you all. Some faces more familiar than others, but I'm so grateful to call the four of you colleagues in this work. To my parents, who have shown me that you can move, you can find a new community, but it's the service that you give to where you live and who you are nearby is what makes a place feel like home. And I have brought that lesson in every phase of my life, and I'm so grateful for it. Muchisimas gracias, mami y papi. To my siblings, I have the best siblings. I am the youngest of five, and they were the first council I served on. Even if it was just deciding what we were going to do on sibling day, I learned how to negotiate, speak up, keep up, be heard by growing up with them. Margarita, Dina, I love you both so much, and I am the woman I am because you two are my sisters. To my children, becoming a parent has brought a whole new side of Palm Springs. It's deepened my community. I've gotten to know my neighbors better. I've gotten to just see Palm Springs in a whole new way, and I'm so grateful to be able to be raising my family here. To my husband Brendan, who is solving problems all the time, he is... Brendan, you are so reliable, and true, and loyal, and smart, and encouraging, and it takes family members to believe in public servants, to do this work, to serve long evenings. And thank you so much for cheering me on. I know Brendan has big shoes to fill in the respects of Adam and all the work that you do in terms of... It takes a real compromise in how we are raising our family, and I'm grateful for you, Brendan. To this community, to my neighbors, to my friends, to the businesses, to the tribe who have championed and supported me in this work, I am grateful, and I will... I'm so grateful, and it's hard to kind of put into words a little bit how much I want to bring that honor to the work every single day. To my neighbors and to my constituents, thank you for your faith. I look forward to collaborating, to listening. I can promise that I will be available, I will be accessible, and I want to work with you. The solutions of our city are from the people who live here and enjoy the city. And it's us five, but it's with all of the amazing engagement from our community that makes all of this work so possible. To staff, thank you so much for your grace with my questions. In the next year, I really look forward to working with you all. In my time on the Measure J, I have only had amazing experiences, and I feel so fortunate to expand that learning with you all. This is day one, day, I don't know, first 10 minutes of the next four years, and I am just so thrilled to be here. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Reddy, would you like to share a few words?
Thank you. I have to admit, this is way more emotional than I thought it would be. But thank all of you for joining us this evening. Just a few words I want to say. You know, of course, I need to thank the voters in District 5 for your support. I'm certainly going to work hard to represent you and all the citizens and residents and visitors of this city. That being said, there's a few, you know, there's a lot of friends in the audience, and I want to thank you for coming, and I've seen, you know, I see Pam, Pam McDonald, Ed, thank you, and I see Jim and James, and I had, I put a list, it was great that everyone was coming. And then there's the people from Palm Springs who are still here, friends of mine, there's Denise, and Cindy, and Sherri, and Yubi, and just hello to all of you, and thank you for coming, and Kitty. So it's most appreciated. But with regard to Kristi and Lisa, I've had the opportunity to work with them for several years, and I clearly know the dedication and the hard work that you put into this, and it is so appreciated, and I understand what you did, and I thank you for your service. And thank you for swearing me in, Lisa. I will always remember our time together. To both of you, thank you. It was interesting, the one question I got when I was running for city council, quite frequently, actually, was, "Do you think you'd be able to change roles going back to City Hall after 21 years as city manager?" And after, you know, reflecting on that, I realized that it's certainly not the normal path of former city managers, that's for sure. But it was an easy decision for me because I was excited about being a part of what the next iteration of Palm Springs is going to be. Obviously, we've come a long way, but there's always still more to do, right? There's downtown, convention center, airport, housing, affordable housing, services to be done. There's so much that we have to do. But there's also the vision of what we can be. And when I think through that, of what that vision is, it's about what do we need to bring into existence as a council and as a community that takes our city to the next step, a different place than we've been? And sometimes that is going to be a bold, a transformational type of program. And sometimes, what I've learned is that sometimes a little slower approach gets more done. It's what we call in the public administration literature as mobilizing prudence. The key is to be able to discern the difference between one or the other. But to the extent that we do those things well, what we know is that we've got the resources that provides our safety services, right? The great parks, all the things that we want to do for our community, the streets, can I repeat, the streets, and more streets, that, in essence, the things that make our neighborhoods vibrant. And I just want to mention one policy that I think has been one of the most significant things that has affected this city, and this is how we govern, and that is the neighborhood organizations. We started that in 2005, so this coming year is going to be 20 years. And when you think about it, how that occurred and how that has blossomed into the 52 neighborhood organizations. And I need to say that the city council that was here, Jenny Foote, and Steve Purnay, and Chris Mills, we got that started, and it blossomed. And then Jeff Coors was on, and the rest of the council, they, every council since have embraced it. They've embraced it, and they've made it flourish. And Lisa, for many years, you were the main liaison, and I sat through many of those meetings with you. So the thing that was so important about that is it created this partnership between the residents and city council. And because the ultimate criterion for evaluating any public policy is if it improves the quality of community life, that was easy because we had that partnership, and we knew when we were serving them the best. So those are the kinds of things that we're all going to be doing together and that I'm very excited about. And then just let me just finally say that I'm so excited to work with my new colleagues, and I look forward to that. And to the staff, we're here to support you, and I commit to do that. I know your dedication, all of you, and we're here to support your efforts because we all were working together for the city that we love the most, Palm Springs. So again, I'd like to thank all the, my friends, my colleagues that I've served with, and the colleagues I am going to serve with, and everyone, look forward to doing my best. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the appointment of the mayor and the mayor pro tem. I will call at this time for a motion to appoint councilmember Ron DeHart to the position of mayor for a one-year term commencing upon appointment.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mayor Ron, Mayor Pro Tem Ron DeHart to mayor. Do we have a second?
Yes, I will second that motion. Sorry, Ron, we had to find the button again.
Oh, thank you. My screen is not. We always had that problem.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
We should do a verbal.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
We are now joined by Supervisor V. Manuel Perez, who will administer Mayor DeHart's oath of office. oath of office.
Hi, everyone. Beautiful mask, but I got a little sick, started yesterday. But I thought this was very, 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 very important. Let me just start by saying very quickly, if I may, the awesomeness that exists in this building right now, it's amazing. Like, I'm looking at the leadership from Chris Mills to Dennis Woods to Robert Moon to J.R. Roberts to Jeff Coors, Jenny Foote. You've all done so much. And then as well, Christie Hostage and Lisa Middleton. Those are some huge mountains for us to climb as the next set of leaders. And of course, David Ready, Naomi Soto, congratulations. Grace Garner, Jeffrey Bernstein, for all the good work you've done and will continue to do. And then, it was very important for me to be here because now we have Mayor Ron DeHart, who is the first Latino, first openly gay Mexican-American mayor, and 87-year history of Palm Springs, California. Did I do that? So I said this morning, come on, man. You can't let this sickness, this little cold, keep you home. Just rest up throughout the day, take medication, and show up because this is historical. And just think about it, how historical it is as well. Today is El Dia de la Virgen de Guadalupe, the march that takes place from Palm Springs all the way to Coachella, which I've been able to do for, I did it three times, and I'll tell you, every single time I've done it, the next day, I am so sore. There's so much to say about our mayor. Obviously, a proud Latino from a working-class family. He's been able to call Palm Springs his community for 15 years. His origins, in case you don't know, La Paz, Mexico, 1860. His ancestors were professional vaqueros in the Arizona Territory. In other words, professional cowboys. His maternal patriarch, Ramon Severo Valencia, 1853 to 1939, was one of the founders of Wickenburg, Arizona, where Ron and his sisters were born. And you know what? And it goes on and on because obviously of the history of his family and himself, even dating back to special collections and archives at the Arizona State University under the leadership, which is known as the Odoro Mariana Rodriguez Ocampo Collection, where you have Hispanic people in Arizona that have made history. It's amazing. And obviously, over the course of all these years, he's fought for social justice, ongoing, like all of you. And that's what I think about Palm Springs. You are a beacon. You are all at the forefront, and I appreciate, and I've learned so much from all of you. Mr. Mayor?
Let's do it.
If you don't mind raising your right hand and repeat after me. I, Ron DeHarte...
I, Ron DeHart.
That while serving as mayor...
That while serving as mayor...
Of the Palm Springs City Council...
Of the Palm Springs City Council.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support...
And defend...
And defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies...
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic...
That I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith...
And allegiance...
And allegiance...
To the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely...
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation...
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will...
And that I will...
Well and faithfully...
Well and faithfully...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties...
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Felicidades.
Thank you.
Congratulations, congratulations, Mr.? Congratulations, Mayor DeHart, your meeting.
All right, the next order of business is the appointment of Mayor Pro Tem. Is there a motion to appoint Councilmember Naomi Soto to the position of Mayor Pro Tem for a one-year term commencing upon appointment?
I'd like to make the motion.
Second? First and second, lock your vote. City Clerk?
Motion carries, 5-0.
Congratulations, Naomi. Councilmember Bernstein, would you like to make a few comments?
Yes, I would, thank you. And first, let me be the first on the dais to officially welcome you, Mayor DeHart, in your new role.
Thank you.
I've had the privilege of getting to know you better, watching you work, and witnessing your incredible commitment to making Palm Springs all that it can be. I am so looking forward to the year ahead with you at the helm, so thank you. I'd also want to welcome both Mayor Pro Tem Soto and Councilmember Ready, both of whom I've had the pleasure to work with in the past, and I'm excited about what you both bring to council. I'm very proud of what we've accomplished in 2024, and there's been a lot of projects initiated, a lot of projects in development break ground, and a lot of projects finally completed. It's not lost on me that much of it began long before I was in council, but there are some historic things. This year marked important settlement agreements that not only brought resolution to difficult issues, but will end up saving countless hours of staff time and costs. We settled with the College of the Desert our past disputes, and more importantly, witnessed the groundbreaking of the $400 million campus within the works for 20 years, but now with an opening date of just a few years. We settled with the Section 14 Former Residents and Descendants with a deal that is not only financially prudent, but more importantly, has gone a long way to heal our community and continue to set Palm Springs as an example of inclusivity. The AIDS Memorial, another process, allowed the community to come together with the artists to design something that I believe is truly special, and yes, Pierce Resorts and Crema finally settled a forever-matling issue. In our housing and homelessness, we made some tremendous strides this year. As a result of the Section 14 discussions, Palm Springs embarked on a monumental effort to address housing issues. For the first time, we are dedicating $20 million of existing funds to a focus on affordable homeownership. And this comes in a year where after 14 years, we opened not one but two affordable rental housing unit developments and made significant progress on a third. We also opened our navigation center, establishing a continuum of care that sets an example for our nation. Our housing and homeless departments, housing and homelessness departments deserve recognition for this incredible work. Our economic development has been tremendous this year, in large part thanks to our finally having a fully dedicated staff team in economic development. We saw the opening of the long-awaited Thompson Hotel just this, and just this week, the groundbreaking of the Dream Hotel, and it seemed like a new business opened every week. And this year, we dedicated $1 million to help minority entrepreneurs start new businesses in our city. And further securing our financial stability, Palm Springs made significant steps towards fully funding our pension liability, and thanks to the voters, the extension of Measure J was passed with resounding support. And I want to mention that is the last ordinance I signed as mayor about 15 minutes ago. Our Palm Springs holidays and other efforts, such as the new concessions in the airport, have continued to shine a light on and support our locally-owned businesses, which I think are the heart and soul of our community, and yes, I do have a personal bias. We've begun work on upgrading our convention center, airport broadband access, and there's a lot more that will help both our economy and our community. And I believe that with our work this year, we are now establishing new economic pillars that will grow in the future, like healthcare, renewable energy, tech, and arts and culture, with efforts like the Plaza Theater that started restoration this year. We also made significant steps towards investing in our neighborhoods and community with the Parks Master Plan that will be unveiled next year, two brand-new playgrounds, more in the works, 24 pickleball courts in the works, and significant improvements to our swim center, recreation field lighting, public art, sustainability, and more. And we're also on the well on the way towards a complete renovation of our library. 2025 promises to bring our city even more as we go with our master plans for economic development, the general plan, and zoning code. We also held our first joint city council, tribal council meeting in six years this year. No one can say we didn't do a lot this year. And it's been my honor and the privilege of a lifetime to serve as your mayor. I didn't think I'd get emotional either. It's not something I took lightly. I promise to keep working hard, just as hard in years to come. I'll tell the story, when my mother was seven months pregnant with me, with my sisters as toddlers, my father traveled to Mississippi as part of the Freedom Summer to help efforts for voter registration. So my whole life, I was taught there's nothing more valuable than one's vote. And the fact that the residents of Palm Springs chose to cast their vote for me two years ago, allowing me to serve as mayor this last year, has instilled upon me the obligation to keep working hard for the city. Before I finish, I want to thank a few people for this past year, and as the seven mayors in this room will know, the staff works very hard. So my first and probably best decision I'll have ever made on council was to join a unanimous council decision to appoint Scott Stiles as city manager. Scott, I'm incredibly grateful for all you've done for council, staff, the community, and to help me personally in this role. Teresa Galavan, Flynn Fag, Jeremy Hammond, Andy Mills, Paul Alvarado, Chris Mooney, Wayne Olson, Amy Blaisdell, all the department directors and staff, I couldn't imagine a smarter, harder-working, more dedicated group of people. To the other 600-plus staff members, you are truly an inspiration, and our city is lucky to have you. Thank you also for your incredible effort on making Palm Springs a certified neurodiversity workplace. I also want to thank particularly the council staff, Cindy Cairns, Yubi Rios, and Alyssa Chavez. I don't know how you juggle at all. I'm sorry for all the times I may have driven you crazy, but thank you for keeping me sane. Lastly, I want to thank my husband, Dr. Oscar Shumudis, for this last year. As a gay Jewish Latin immigrant, he's faced some challenges, but probably none more so than his health challenges this last year. Yet he never wavered in support for me and what I chose to do for the city. Thank you for being my cheerleader, my best friend. Thank you, Palm Springs.
Mayor Bernstein, you have performed admirably as mayor. Your public service and commitment to make it a difference has been an invaluable asset to Palm Springs. I'm grateful you kept small business and tourism in the forefront. I express my sincere gratitude for your exemplary leadership. As a proud Mexican-American from working-class family, I'm honored, the first Riverside County Mexican-American supervisor, sworn me in as the 27th mayor of Palm Springs. Thank you, Supervisor Perez. With the last several elections, with only the last several elections, Palm Springs City Council has become a majority Hispanic city council. This diverse representation reflects the vibrant tapestry of our community, where differences in race, socioeconomic status, age, sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression are all celebrated. To former mayors Middleton and Hostage, we're grateful for your service. The city recently recognized Lisa Middleton for 50 years of public service. Lisa has demonstrated exceptional leadership as a champion for improvements in transportation, infrastructure, climate, and affordable housing, public safety, and homelessness. Your wisdom and stewardship, as well as the example you set as a colleague, will be missed. I already feel relief from the pressure one is under when speaking after Lisa. Lisa, you set the bar high, you were always prepared, and your voice of reason has served the city well. Thank you. City Manager Scott Stiles, I'm grateful for the hard work and dedication that you brought to City Hall. It appears you and Kelly are adjusting just fine to desert life. We are all very happy to see that because the slow pace of Palm Springs, the calm days, the quiet weekends can be very difficult to adjust to. You're doing a great job, and thank you. Chief Mills, you know, under your leadership, our city has made significant strides in public safety and community well-being. I'm proud to have been part of the hiring process and to have you leading our team of outstanding officers and non-sworn personnel. I know the community supports continued investment in resources to best service our residents and visitors. I'm proud and I'm impressed by the exceptional work of the police officers committed to keeping us safe. I didn't know when you were hired that it was a two-for-one deal, but you and Kathy make an incredible team, and we are grateful to both of you. Chief Alvarado, I don't get to take credit for hiring you, but you are exactly what we needed in Palm Springs. Your tireless efforts and commitment to public safety have already made a difference. In 2023, we had 13,108 calls, and volume is trending 6% higher this year. Our fire department is safer, stronger, and better equipped and better prepared with you and the 100 outstanding fire personnel at the ready. Chief, I don't want to discount your leadership and management skills and the wealth of firefighting experience you bring, but I truly give you props for having what possibly could be the best two words on a resume, credentials that you could have of all time. Kitty Alvarado. With those two words, the city knew you were the right fit. Thank you. To the 650 staff members, I extend my sincere gratitude for your hard work and dedication and love of Palm Springs. Your can-do spirit and tireless efforts have been instrumental in our success. I'm inspired by your passion, creativity, and perseverance. The demands can be many, and I know it's not always easy. Palm Springs is a special place because of you. To my fellow council members, Councilmember Soto, Ready, and Garner, I look forward to working with you to address the challenges and opportunities facing the city. I know the chemistry will enhance our work. I'm fortunate to celebrate this occasion tonight with family and friends from Arizona, Oregon, Colorado, tomorrow's Oklahoma, New York, San Francisco, and San Diego. I'm also very grateful for the unwavering support of my husband of 26 years, Keith Grand, who's been part of my civic journey. Grand, who's been part of my civic journey. While I proudly represent District 3, I'm committed to serving the entire city of Palm Springs. As we heard earlier from Mayor Bernstein, we have tackled a lot and we've accomplished significant milestones. The challenges ahead are substantial, but I know by working together, we're going to meet every single challenge that comes our way. As we move forward, we must prioritize fiscal responsibility and efficiently efficient city operations. We have ambitious plans for the future, including significant projects and infrastructure improvements. It's crucial to balance these initiatives with the need to deliver essential services to our residents. It's customary for an incoming mayor to lay out new plans and vision and new projects and fabulous ideas for the future. I'm not that mayor. With $3 billion plus in commercial and municipal development projects in the pipeline, Palm Springs is undergoing a significant transformation. To say we have a lot going on is an understatement. We have master plans underway for zoning the airport, parks and recreation, the general plan, convention center expansion, and economic development. Seventy capital improvement projects are on the books. We have the La Plaza Theater, the library renovation, aggressive housing plans, and dozens and dozens of projects on the desks of 20 city departments. On top of all of that, there's an unknown number of projects sitting with 15 boards and commissions. When you take away police, fire, and airport staff, you realize we're trying to do all of that. We're trying to do everything in this transformational economic development period in the years ahead with fewer than 250 employees. It's impossible to produce timely quality outcomes when there are hundreds of projects on top of thousands of daily tasks and duties our workforce manages to keep the city functioning. My big bold initiative is to put the brakes on. I'm calling on a prioritization of current projects while delivering constituent services at a level we can all be proud of. My priorities continue to be laser focused on quality of life, economic development, and becoming a we-can city. Priorities, easy, quality of life. That includes homelessness, crime, housing, they all remain a top priority. I will continue to support solutions to lower crime and ensuring safe neighborhoods for all. I'll lead the effort to support and fully fund a strong investment in public safety. I'm committed to reach and maintain fully staffed police and fire to serve our residents and the 100,000 visitors we have during season. Policing priorities and philosophy aligned with our community desires and expectations will remain a top priority. Staying ahead of the changing environment for the unhoused and thinking outside of the box to deliver workforce housing are my priority number one. Looking at economic development, priority number two. Actively seek opportunities to diversify our economic well-being while continuing to nurture our tourism economy. We need to underscore technology, renewable energy, and our tourism infrastructure plans that are in place today. I'm creating a mayor's council for economic development. We will keep the spotlight on information technology, innovation, and incubation, a green energy zone in North Palm Springs to support infrastructure and resources to maximize our sustainable energy generation and embrace a clean energy future. Let's position Palm Springs as a cultural and artistic attraction, enhancing our community well-being and creating new visitors' experiences. Provide support to allow our economic development office to excel at maintaining current municipal development, attraction, retention, and retention. This includes the streamlining of our permitting process, investing in marketing campaigns, and invest in the tools to implement the economic development strategies. Priority number three, be the city of we-can. We can accomplish all these projects. We need to rein in the overreaching goals. I ask everyone to recognize that we're working on a significant number of projects, and to ensure that we provide the resources necessary to manage and complete each project. We need to rein in those overreaching goals. Our city can only do so much. We're trying to do too much. Let's align the strategic work of city council, all our city departments, and all our commissions to achieve our stated priorities. Let's embrace the mindset that we can actively seek solutions. We can overcome challenges and move us forward. We can ensure our city manager has the support and tools needed to streamline customer services. We can achieve our vision of a one-stop shop for development services. We can make that a reality. We can show home builders, developers, commercial investors that Palm Springs welcomes them and that it is easy to do business in Palm Springs. We can prioritize customer satisfaction. We can maintain daily operations of the city and achieve our strategic goals. I'm asking that we work tirelessly to ensure our actions are focused, limited to the strategic goals, and that our decisions are guided by the needs of our community. In closing, I acknowledge a sense of civility and respect for the office has eroded. We're a community of people of varying and diverse political opinions and strategic focus. Our individual and collective capacity to hold multiple perspectives, even when we disagree, is an incredibly valuable tool. It's disheartening to hear about retaliation and intimidation community members face this year. Sometimes, even when our actions are not intentionally hurtful, what we say, do, or type on a keyboard can hurt others. I pledge to fight any form of retaliation and intimidation and restore trust in the process. During the challenging times ahead, I urge everyone to embrace civility, respect, and understanding. Together, let's speak out for one another and against hate and intolerance and uphold the values of inclusivity and diversity. For me, public service is not about the title or the position, it's about the people that we all serve. I'm full of promise that with our new council members, we can work in partnership and unity and purpose to move the city forward. I ask you all to come along with me and all of the city council and city hall staff to stay focused and disciplined, contribute to the community, support others to care for themselves, and appreciate the value of our differences and work together to build a more inclusive and compassionate community. I'm truly honored to be your 27th mayor, and I'm excited about the year ahead. Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is public comment on non-agenda items. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address city council on items of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. Although the city council values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, it generally cannot take any action on items not listed on the agenda. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker, and our first speaker is Michael Pitkin, followed by Dan Gore.
Michael Joseph Pitkin, in four years, I have been denied the right to vote in two presidential elections in Palm Springs. Four years ago, being unhoused, I was told by the registrar of voters, I do not have a residential address in Palm Springs, therefore I cannot vote. I was told I had to come physically to the city of Riverside and pinpoint on their map where I was, out by the tram, before they would register me to vote. This current election, September 26, '24, I registered to vote on vote.gov affidavit number 65DA798239. Vote.gov stated, unhoused can vote, all needed is a cross street and a mailing address. I registered mail at the LGBTQ the center. The registrar of voters, Anthony "Dwayne" Hill III, Angela Roots claimed I could not vote. Eventually, they mailed me an official ballot after the election, precinct number 413112. Day of the election, I went to voter center site Palm Springs Public Library. Volunteer Andrew and Lead George Arquette tried to register me at 2782 North Gerasol Avenue, precinct number 412108. I refused, voided my papers, and claimed voter fraud. I ask for an investigation into these two separate precinct classifications. To me, denying one to vote violates all.
Thank you. Next speaker, Dan Gore.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dan Gore. I own Oscars and downtown Palm Springs. And I don't believe there's a person in front of me or behind me that doesn't want the Plaza Theater to be open and be a success and be admired by our community. The current situation at stake, this issue of taking away Calura Trattoria's patio, needs to be solved, especially since the lack of planning, the lack of organization, and the lack of transparency has created a sour taste in many people in the city. A 22-year-old small business is being affected by an imminent domain threat, whereas the small business should be flourishing along with the new Plaza Theater, exactly how it did for the last 10 years the theater was open, not to mention during the last several events that they held at the theater before it began the remodel. There are variances given out every day in numerous cities around the country, not to mention in our own city of Palm Springs. Let's get a variance approved for 15-feet entrance instead of 20-feet. Let's not disrupt this restaurant any further, not to mention disrupting their family and their coworkers who have worked so hard to build this much-loved restaurant. Just recently, the city has spent many hours and tens of thousands of dollars arguing and focusing on a statue. Yes, a statue. Let's focus on actual human being, a human being that's having his small business restaurant uplifted. Let's reach a compromise with the city, with this restaurant, so everyone is happy. Let's get this done, let's do the tough stuff, and let's get back to work for this greatness of our city. And as our new mayor mentioned earlier, let's make this a we-can city, let's work this out. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. David Feldman, next up. After David is John Pavlik.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council, new and continuing city staff, members of the community. I'm here to talk about the Parks Master Plan report. It's been, and welcome, Nicholas Gonzalez, we are thrilled you're here. It's really a very important role, and we really desperately need your work here. So I call this the Master Plan Report because, in fact, the authors of this report says it's not a master plan, it is kind of the prelude to a plan. And I've actually read this, this is not going to shock anybody here, three times, and I'm on my fourth reading. So when I come to speak to you tonight, it's not just to pontificate, but to really ask you to think very seriously about some of the elements of what's in this report slash document. There are some really good things in this report. The people who wrote this report, the consultants did a masterful job at Community Input. There was a lot of outreach by the consultants. They suggested there needs to be a Parks and Rec marketing strategy, wayfinding Parks and Trailhead information, we need to respond to climate change, adjust facility hours, and so on and so forth. They advocated for establishing key performance metrics for staffing needs and sustainability, and to increase funding, all for all of that. But there were some things that were lacking in this report that I would urge you to take consideration of and to ask the new Parks and Rec director to take whatever time he needs, two months, three months, six months, to complete the work to move this from a report into a master plan. I have seven seconds left somehow, but the key thing that's missing here is benchmarking. We are not benchmarked in this report to any meaningful comparison.
David, thank you, your time's up.
Thank you very much.
John, you're next up. John Pavlik, are you still here? All right, next, Abraham Ishak.
Bread crumbs, a word used to describe relationships lacking commitment. In our case, it's different. Bread crumbs are the small wins, the scraps we cling to while hunger gnaws at the edges of our hope. The people of Gaza are starving, living off breadcrumbs, and so are we. At work, I sat across from a senior leader, three or four steps down from the CEO. I said an email went out on October 8th. Since then, silence, I don't feel supported. A month later, HR followed up, we'll hold a webinar on how to deal with trauma. Bread crumbs, a stale offering for a feast of needs. The Palm Springs post ran a picture of us, a fleeting moment of visibility in their state-of-the-city coverage. I was excited until a friend reminded me. Bread crumbs. The next day, the picture vanished. Famine. Councilmember Holstich follows me to the parking lot, draft the resolution, she says. I think, but they had time to write the original resolution. I share the news with councilmember Garner. She shakes her head and says, don't expect an apology from the council. Bread crumbs. Still, I whip the votes, I wait, the agenda is discussed, nothing. Starvation. On the one-year anniversary, a moving speech was made. She was asked, are you adding it to the agenda? A quick no. Famine. And the resolution? Read it. Israelis get the full support of council. Palestinians, their aspirations are acknowledged. Empty promises wrapped in politeness. Bread crumbs. In Gaza, people starve for food and freedom, here we starve for justice. How long will we survive on breadcrumbs? Books, not bums.
Thank you. City clerk, do we have any other public comment?
We have one more current mentor, councilmember Kristi Holstich.
The Honorable Kristi Holstich. The Honorable Kristi Holstich.
Thank you. I'm so happy to be here on this side of it, watching you. I feel so proud. Now I can say whatever I want, right? Been waiting eight years to do that. I just left two people out of my speech in addition to my parents, which is Naomi Soto, our now mayor pro tem, and Councilmember David Ready. I just wanted to add my kudos to you and what you've already done for this city. David, you are an incredible human being. You are so, so bright, and I just saw your leadership shine as I watched you allow others to shine and do the hard work behind the scenes. And to see you lead on policy, it's an amazing thing, and it's only the beginning. And I'm so excited to see where you will continue to take the city. So thank you for stepping up. It's a big deal. I'm done after seven years. I don't know how you are, I want more after 21 years of serving this city. And it's an incredible gift to the community and all of us in Palm Springs. Thank you for it. Naomi Soto, I just wanted to acknowledge my council member from District Four. Thank you for stepping up to serve. I've had the honor of knowing you for 10 years. When you we served on the Board of Planned Parenthood of the Pacific Southwest together, you are now the chair of that organization. I was proud to appoint you with the council to the Measure J Commission. You went on to serve as chair of that commission. You are by far and away so qualified to serve this city, and you bring such an important voice, and it's so desperately needed. So thank you for stepping up to serve. I know how hard it is as a working mom of little kids, and that voice is just so important. So I know you will continue to do great things for this city. So thank you for your service.
With time to spare. Thank you. City Clerk, any other public comment?
I have no further commenters.
All right, thank you. Next item is city council and city manager request for upcoming agenda development. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and I think I would be remiss if I didn't take just a very quick second to just say that on behalf of all 650 of our city employees, we certainly want to thank Lisa Middleton and Kristi Holstich for your service. We've all benefited from the guidance and support that you've offered us in the work that we're trying to do, and we certainly look forward to working with Mayor Pro Tem Soto and Councilmember David Ready, in addition to all of our existing council members. It's never been lost on me that, you know, on staff, we work as hard as we can to provide the best guidance possible, the best recommendations from what we do, but you're the ones that have to put your name on the ballot and submit yourself to the voters. And for that, I'm very thankful that there's people like you that are willing to do that. So you have, I know, the strongest commitment possible from everybody on our staff to our highest wish is to do the best job that we can to give the best advice to you, and we just look forward to all of you leading us and giving us good policy direction as we move forward. So thank you to all of you, and thank you again to the outgoing council members. It's been a privilege and an honor for all of us to work with you, and the community owes you a debt of gratitude for your service to our city, so thank you. And, you know, the work just gets going now, and we have a lot going on, as a lot of you have indicated. Just looking ahead to the coming schedule, I just want to give you a little preview of what's coming. We've talked a lot about economic development. We'll be doing a presentation on our economic development strategic plan. I know our planning department is going to come forward with general plan and element updates, and of course, at the next council meeting, there's a number of appointments that all of you will be making for various committee assignments and other things, and we'll be bringing that forward. You'll see these hotel incentive agreements in each of the next three meetings. Those are agreements where some of our hoteliers have agreed to make investments into their property in partnership with agreements with us, and those are all public hearings. So we'll be doing all of those. January 23rd, we will be back. We want to give you an update on the Convention Center Economic Development Impact Study. We have an appeal of the Fulfillment Center project. Building Code Board of Appeals ordinance will be coming forward, and we want to have presentations and reports to you on the Parks and Rec Master Plan and Airport Master Plan. As I look forward, as I look at that particular agenda, we may need to move a one or two of those items to the following council meeting in February. Just we've got a lot kind of moving into that area. We've done, there's been some work done on a parking study downtown and around the city, and there's folks that are anxious to brief us on that. And then, of course, in February, we're moving into our two-year budget work that we're going to be doing. That has to be presented to you and approved no later than the end of June of this year. And so I would anticipate bringing a mid-year budget update to the council that looks at some of our revenue forecast information and expenses. So we'll be, we're kind of working in that direction. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any council members have items? Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes. First, I was advised I left out Jeff Ballinger for my thanks. So Jeff Ballinger, I, a special thanks to Jeff Ballinger, who never ceases to amaze me with his wise advice and uncanny ability to always remain calm. I had it in there, I just didn't read it, so thank you. I would like to also, I would like to propose an urgent agenda item to add to put a moratorium on new drive-through permits in our city, and not necessarily to stop them, but we're relying on very old information in terms of traffic, in terms of our climate action plan and our sustainability, and we've had three in the last two years and more coming up, and I think we just need to revisit this. And we're in the middle of our zoning code update, and it would make more sense to finalize the zoning code before we add on new ones. I don't want to stop development. I don't want to necessarily get rid of them. I just think we need to have the proper guidelines.
Do we have three in support?
It requires three council members to say yes to add it to an agenda item.
I'm fine with adding it.
I'm fine with it.
Okay, we've got this added for the next agenda. Thank you. Any other items? Yes.
What I would like to do is--
Councilmember Ready.
Wow. Did you say that again? It's hard to. I would just like to applaud the city manager on doing his best attempt to do timed agendas with the minutes there, so I wish you the best with that, truly. I couldn't do it. I wish you the best. It's good.
All right, any other comments? Beautiful. We will adjourn to the next regular city council meeting will be held on Thursday, January 9, 2025, at 5:30, and we thank you all for participating today.